The next.
Let's cook it up.
Smoke it each shots.
That's all day.
And John has to do it.
You've been in her size bottom more than damage.
And why?
So.
I mean, ever since.
Yeah.
It ain't out where but if it's a lot of weather, you know, some of those places northeast and the northwest.
What if we just bring them up to the third?
They're not used to on hand, but some of them don't have air conditioning.
Some of them, some of them, but no everything they don't get any service.
I'm sixteen.
Hey, when the wind blows forty mile an hour, that's not. At everybody, every time we go.
It depends on the city too.
But they're invested on utilities.
Is their system, is their system really old?
No, they got.
Let's see what is.
But they got you been there like a two lane white hot road in three. That's what I thought.
Good, we haven't done any ride away.
They won't because it's pretty tough because they're, they're, they're looking, they got investors in.
Yeah, people will have millions of dollars do that in it.
Yeah.
There, that's when you're.
Yeah, that's always is that they.
Tell them what you want, John.
Pay me now, pay me later.
I did.
Dream of.
Dream of my.
Don't burn the place down.
Exactly. So that people might.
Buy the tree, keep trees down.
I get roadkill, cut surgery in three weeks.
They have a certain.
I'll take your finger.
Their face cable off.
Hopefully they just, I've heard they just now you're in a swing, but you can still.
Somebody else.
I know you like that plane years ago on the Fairfield Park landed on electric line.
I've been putting it off now on.
Do you remember that when that plane landed on our electric line on Fairfield Park? And the electric line could hold broke and let that plane right that end. So they start by the front yard, right?
So good afternoon, everyone. It's twelve o'clock. I'm like a source of meeting for the airport authority.
And so this time. The quarter of all the milk. No, it's, it's my blood sugar one.
We had the sign and sheet has been passed around and we do have form. And so it brings to the approval of the agenda. The same one.
So move.
I have a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from member Kazor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries to approve the agenda. Uh, this is the new one. We moving the citizens comments up to the next item. So anyone like to? Can you comment? With your mouth bowl.
No, it wasn't.
We'll get to you later.
I, I'm on the agenda late Friday.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Hey. Anything that okay.
All right, Charles.
Okay, well, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Hopefully you've read them. Um, this is for the July meeting. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve methods.
Have a motion to approve from member Kazor. Do I have second?
Oh, second.
Second from member Larson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. The minutes are approved. As we come to reports, we call.
Thank, uh, there's hard copies on the table and there's an extra here if you need someone to do more over there. Um. Sort of a follow up on the minutes real, just a couple of things that just in case you were not aware, those items that were brought up uh, on the minutes and passed. Previously, and were discussed with the city council and passed all that passed through the city council as well. Just to, in case you were not aware. Um. Following up with a typical summaries that we have here. Um, usually this time of year because of the weather, it's usually. And some mid summer is, is pretty tough on the small aircraft. And so the numbers are usually a little bit lower this year. If you look at the numbers down below, you'll see that everything's about double. This past month in July, twice as many operations, twice as much fuel, things of that nature. Um, so even with the rain and the heat in July wasn't, wasn't a factor for us this year. Um, so. Part of that, of course, has been with in Murphysboro being closed. Did a lot of that. So it was a little bit of a transition for us in the summertime where we're used to being able to slowly transition from one way to another. All of a sudden we went to. Twice as much as usual. So it's been rather. It seemed rather busy around here, even though we, we were able to handle it all, just like it because of the fact it was all of a sudden, it didn't just transition into it. Uh, we'll take it. We'll do it. We'll go with it. Um, everybody that was operating out of here, even temporarily, um, was very appreciative and seemed like everything's went pretty well. There was a couple of. Pickups here and there, but nothing that couldn't be worked through. So it all went well. Um, even with the. The rain that we've had recently, the, the projects on the airport have still been able to stay on schedule. Uh, because most of the time our, our storms were coming through at night. So it worked out well for us. Um, then the rest of the time. They just happened to be in a phase of the project that when it was raining, it didn't really matter. So, um, as far as the sewer project out front. Uh, we, they've set two, they're in the process of setting the final of the three pump stations. They're sitting, they're working on the final one right now, but they've set two of them. Uh, there's been some. Changes requested from the engineer for shovel power. That's caused some. Some issues between our contractor and our project manager from, from Darver. Um, so hopefully they'll, they're able to get on the same page and make things work out. And they're addressing them as well as they can, but some of the requests are. In the opinion of our. Consultant, some of the requests are for gravity systems and not, and not pressure systems. So, uh, that's where there's a little bit of conflict here and there that they're going to have to work through. Um. And that this, the CD is aware that there will end up having to be a change order at the end of the project to cover those extra requests from shovel power. Um, we'll just have to see how bad it is when it comes down, when it comes to project closeout. Um, also, I mean, you're going to hear later. From Dr. George, but, uh, the weather didn't hold him up either. His, his, uh. His hanger is completely skinned in, completely erected and, uh. Uh, they were, um. Duck River put in his, uh, the, the above ground poles, utility poles in for electricity to cover not only his hanger, but all the hangers in that area. So those two poles that are there. Um, will cover. Those, the new hangers that are coming in, uh, any, any new hangers in that area. So they'll be covering the ones, the large ones on the bottom. Those that are up there that are, um, going to be discussed today. Um, when we get a final layout of the next hangers, we'll start running electric to the south. Similar, and it'll have to be above ground like that just because of the layout and the, um. Rock issues and things of that nature. So it just works out better for us to stay, keep it above ground. And, um. That electrical will only. Cover to the temporary, uh, facility for MTSU after anything else from that point forwards will come off of two thirty-one on its own line separately. So you won't see any, you know, you won't really see anything farther, go farther than the feed store as far as above ground lines headed that direction. Same thing for the water. Uh, water will come in now that we've got those other two utilities because. Right off the bat, we're, we're hitting utilities. Our, uh. Uh, sewer project, those guys hit every utility we had out here, even including internet, uh, the cable, we got it, caught it with a dump truck. From the top, it was elevated line and they still hit it with the top of the dump truck. So I, I know they, they made sure they got every single utility out here at some point in time. So it was sort of payback that the first project. Doing an underground electrical for Dr. George's hanger, they, they cut the low pressure line. There's a, the sewer pressure line even before luckily it had, there was no, nothing in it. So it was still brand new. But what happened with that was we did find that there were some errors in the layout. And so they did, uh, so that ended up being a good mistake because they found some problems that would have caused, we could have had run into with the next hanger coming in and they were able to address it at that time. And make some changes on the fly, which worked out well. Um, but we're, we're, uh. Everybody's wanting to put. Their utilities in the same spot and it doesn't work that way. They, they don't like it too much. They don't like to be that way. So we're, we're still working through that. Um. But the next steps are, let's put on here, the next steps are the, uh, water and the gas lines. And also this past month, we had. MTSU's events, uh. Coordinators come in. They, they came in and a, and a herd. It's not, you can't even call it as a few. I mean, it was more than a few. It was quite a bit. And, uh, we. It's going to be a good event. Uh, some of you might be aware, I think we've mentioned it before, so just to get an invitation here. Uh, for the twenty first, we mentioned it before, uh, they are requesting RSVP. So. Uh, if you haven't already and you want us to, we can, I'd be glad to submit for the entire board. If you're available, let me know and we'll submit and just to confirm that you will be here. Uh, they're asking for people to start showing at nine thirty. Uh, they, well, the governor will be here at, from ten to eleven. And so the proceedings will start at exactly at ten o'clock because of the fact that the governor is on the tight schedule. So, um, Mayor Carroll will be speaking and, and others, um. That was what's entertaining. It's. The list that they were coming up with when they were doing the vent training of how, how large that list was going to be. And so they had to trim, they already had to start trimming the list just because we only had it.
You know, pick me up.
I think you're number two on the list. You don't have to be number one, but you can get your, your number two. Um, so, but if you'll let us know and we can RSVP.
They can put us on the tarmac or.
Yes, um, and there will be, there's, they're bringing in large tents. They're going to be large tents covering, uh, to make sure we have. We're covered up and out of the sun. Same thing, uh, there'll be some tents up here in the grass for some other things. They've got giveaways. They've got entertainment coming. They've got. Um. Yeah, when they, they're, they're putting on the local, their local TV channel. They're putting on MTSU's TV channel. Um, yeah, they're expecting over two hundred people. And, um. There will be presentation of the, of the airplanes coming in, things of that nature. So they're. The only issue I was hoping that the DC three might be able to sell rides. It's just going to be that big group and they're going to be gone.
Hmm.
They're flying out Wednesday to, to their next show. Uh, they, I think they have another show in between that, but they're already, they're, they already had a commitment. So they're not going to be here unfortunately. So they're not going to be in the backdrop of anything, but. Um, I'm sure there were people that were looking to be able to go through that.
Temple Police Department and Sheriff's Department going to handle traffic or any of that kind of stuff. Have they been notified about that?
Yes, uh, both chiefs are familiar and know what's going on as far as the, uh. Police chief, uh, shit, the city police and, uh. Actually, um, fire department's going to be involved in the, in the show. So a little bit of the presentation. So that's, they're all familiar. Uh, they're going to help even have some, um. They've even making sure that there's. EMS on site, things like that for a crowd that size. They want to make sure, um, they're looking in. You know, even. Portable toilets. So they, they, I mean, that events, that event group came in looking at everything. So they're.
Like aviation day.
They will.
Yeah.
Like it, um, they'll have some, a lot of info stuff. There's even discussion, I hope that works out about they bringing their band with them. There's all kinds of different things. Of course, that's homecoming week for them too. So we'll see how.
Good.
I think so. There's all, it's, it's going to be a big event. They want to make it up because this is going to be their main event. So even with, um, ground breakings and different things of that nature, this is not officially a groundbreaking. This is just a ceremony of some kind, but, um, they'll have a, be an unveiling, their sign, they'll be. Uh, the groundbreaking will be something separate. The, the ribbon cutting will be something separate. Those will be smaller events. This is the big event with the one time show. So that's why they're putting so much effort into it. Um. And they're bringing in shuttle buses to be able to transfer people back and forth. So it's affecting where we're going to, for their parking, we're going to have to park them up here. Uh, and not down the road like we planned on because the buses can't get off road because of their air conditioning systems. Which I hope, I mean, those will be very important, I would assume that day. Like, if it's anything like today, let's hope it's not.
Yeah.
That's why I put there on there. This is pray for lower temperatures and, and no rain. Um, but we've got a route picked out for them. Um, and we went through all that. They've met, they've even met with their bus drivers. I mean, when they bring an event, they bring an event. So it should be entertaining. Um. As you can see down through here, continuing on down, you can see the, the fuel. Um. I even got a. You look at the revenue and things in the gallons compared to previous year, um, New Year's end months. Um, got a call from. City treasurer, as a matter of fact, she wanted to make sure that we didn't have wrong numbers on there. Because the numbers were a lot higher than, than we had last month and the previous years. Same thing though, as you can look at operations are the same way. Twice as much operations as last year this time.
Um. On the, on the fuel.
I know I thought in this all the time. But in granted on the. Regular gas. Net is seventy-four cents a gallon and some of that's self certified, I understand. And on jet. It's ninety-one cents a gallon. And the cost to put it in is probably over a dollar. It's most studies, I think.
The cost for the need for per gallon.
Mm hmm. Is that about, am I about right?
It, it really depends on volume because you can amortize your costs over a large volume. So, uh. I mean, it's not cheap. Yeah, right. There's loan and tear on your.
And so I'm, I'm not suggesting we should do anything, you know. Trying to, but we really need to be thinking about what our cost is to actually on the fuel. That I'm not sure we're covering cost. You're making money, but I'm not sure you're actually covering cost.
I understand. I understand your, your thoughts on that.
And then, and that's not in relation to competitive and all the other, it's just, you know, was it really cost just. For few.
So one of two things that are not in here that probably could be that we have to just sort of. Um. For the cost for, like for jet fuel is the fact that we give. Our base jet customers have discounted rate. Uh, you have volume right discounts, um, but. Majority of the gallons that you saw on this, and I usually put that in there for some reason, didn't do it this time for self, or self serve this year for, uh, this month for the, the avgas will sell circle. So that, uh, is twenty cents cheaper and that gets, um. And as far as in the cost, that shows up as an average. It's, it's averaged in, it's not, it's not so lit, uh. So some of those numbers are. I mean, I, we could possibly get into the, the details of it, but it's easier just to try to summarize it as much as we could.
I'm saying, I just.
But do I think we could potentially? I would love to be able to raise the price up. Be nice to raise up some of our neighbors to the north that over there, what they, what they charge.
Yeah, well, and, and that's not what I'm suggesting. I'm just suggesting if we got into what is the actual cost to serve. That I'm not sure we're covering cost.
We can, we can look at those.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
I think your new Campbell contract helps a little bit in that regard and that they were way more generous with covering maintenance than, than Titan was. Uh, so, so that'll help.
Yes. Yeah, if there's a light that comes on on that jet truck, it's all, it's theirs.
Yeah.
So there's, okay. There's some, there's some things like that that really help out a lot from that. Uh, you'll see under services, you'll see hanger. There's an oddball number there. You look under hanger. Um. It's not a misprint.
Hmm.
That's because that first, the first MTSU check came through. I took credit for it, even though the city might be taking credit for it. I took credit for it.
We took credit for it too.
I love government account. Let somebody take credit.
I won't take credit for it.
All right, good.
For that first one.
Good.
And so it came through. So that, uh, even though I don't, I don't have in hand a, um. I have not seen an executed contract yet, or lease.
And that's because state or.
That's.
County or city.
You see.
Well, I had. Executed contract, um, final one, do I not?
Do you?
I don't.
I've not seen. So that's.
Yeah, I will.
I thought we did too.
It's just could be, it might be, to see level and just said, made it out here. Yeah, but. Um. I, but knowing the check came through, I know that means it was approved all the way up to, all the way up the chain.
That last night I hadn't signed that from Mark Fair. That study session, whether it's the last night, was they removing those buildings or? That was at the last holdup on that.
Well, that was just a letter.
Yeah, that was just a letter about something, but I, I think I have the contract, but I think it was, it's kind of strange. Because it has like four or five last pages because. We signed it and then we mailed it and then they signed it. So, uh, I think it has like four or five last pages to have all the signatures, but I'll, I'll look at it and see if I've got it.
And then that last thing was about the environmental letter.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, that was it. Yeah. Where they're going to reimburse it or something.
Um, we can go down through this, um. Fuel farm, and I think that was something that was even mentioned once before. It's going to be a constant battle, I think, with our self serve. It seems like. Um, we're constantly breaking the nozzles because, and I've, I've found one. We found one that will work and it works great, but the issue is it's so robust, it won't fit down in a lot of the. Uh, so I'm having to get, we're having to get a new part for, and the thing is it's came from Germany. So it's going to be a. It's, it's an issue to get a nozzle through a vendor here to us that's small enough to get into some of their smaller aircrafts, especially like Aryan and some of the other. Um, the, the, the hole. Is a lot smaller to, to fuel with. So. There's a reason why that thing was so robust. It was because it was nice and big and sturdy, which compete, would compete with the MTSU students to keep breaking our. Well, that was, that was the last one that was broken by the MTSU.
Yeah. Is there such thing as an adapter that will?
That's what I was just thinking.
Yes, it, yes, it, we've got it, but it's having to come from Germany.
Oh, so that, that is what's coming from Germany.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's reduced, it's reducing the size of it. Um, so we're, we're working on that to get those.
So they just tend to drop them when they get through.
Yeah, let them drag across the ground when they're hitting them. Or they'll pull them up and they'll think they're doing good and then they'll sort of drop it on the ground and, and then hit the, the hose reel. I mean, it's, it's not there, so they're not paying any attention to it.
Hmm. That might be an, uh. Something you want to mention to training personnel when it comes to fueling a flight, getting an airplane anywhere.
Absolutely.
Take care of the, of the.
Absolutely.
Nozzles. Absolutely.
And we've gotten. All of our equipments operational as of today. All of our stuff has been repaired and brought back. So we've gotten all their, the, the stuff that. Was, uh, the equipment that's being repaired is all back in the house and the old stuff that we were borrowing has been returned. Um. It seems like it's constantly something this, this summer for some reason it's been pretty rough on them. Um. And with the, uh. With the terminal area, just some. The operations computer up there, we had to replace a couple of monitors up there for, uh, that had gone out. And then our planners in the front and back have been. Built in with, uh, to make them look nice for mainly for people coming through for celebration, but also for just day to day operations too. Um. And I put a picture there on the bottom. Of that last page, so people can see what. That's the kind of airplane that we, we like to see here. It's, it's, it's great when you get a phone call and says, is your runway strong enough to support an airplane? And what was entertaining, my thing was nicer than my first apartment, of course. When I went in the, inside, it was bigger than my first apartments, but, um. There were, there's an older couple that walked through and. Looked like they came from Walmart on their way here and stopped by and she was like, oh, they just, they brought the big one today. It's just like, it's not them too. But I mean, there was more crew members than there were passengers on that airplane. But, uh, that's, that's what we like to see. And, uh, it's, it's a beautiful airplane. And that's why I thought I'd put that out there.
G four, G five.
This six.
Those six.
Yes.
How much runway does it need, Paul, to take off?
Uh, that, I don't know. That one took, uh, for, yeah, take off, it took a little over half.
Wow.
But not too bad.
That's pretty good. Yeah.
Not bad at all. They were more concerned about the, the dual wheel of eighty thousand pounds.
Yeah.
See what they're concerned about. And with the fact that we have a concrete ramp, it's not a factor. We can handle anything. Here. Not initially.
Um, there were some that landed on the coast of Georgia a few years ago. Went through.
Seen that, seen photos and seen samples at airports in Tennessee in my previous profession where.
Yeah.
Where they had stopped while they're waiting for fuel. Yeah. It sunk to their axle because they sat there and got hot in the summertime. Yeah.
Hmm. Yeah, that happened on the run with the C seventeen trying to execute a U-turn and, you know, it's going to be a little dub righty. Yeah. Not a good thing.
Yeah. Uh, we did have, um, another, you saying that we did have an aircraft, we did have to remove from the runway that took some time and had to close our runway for almost an hour. And, uh, we've had a lot of cargo come through. And we had a cargo hauler that was due in and we got him off like two minutes before the cargo showed up and called in for its approach. And so they were allow us to let us, Memphis Center let him come in because we kept updating center saying, we're getting, we're working on it, we're getting. And he had. Blown a tire and it was all the way up to his, uh, and we couldn't, he was too heavy to get him up with what we currently had. So we, we finally got him jacked up enough and got the tire changed out, but he had. Rolled it up in his, his brake pads. So. My care usually has, they take care of him. He usually has lists for him, but they had taken him just runner to use for something else. And so we, they were having to make it work. To get it off and it took about an hour or so to get him off there. And we're able to work through it.
Was that straight line winds that got your call at the road? Blanded.
That's a good question. That came, the initial one broke with the storms that came through. Um, and then. Um, it's just so much water down there. When they put the next one, the new one in. They put it six foot in the ground, he says, they, they just. They're going, they had so much water, they couldn't put any polk crepe, as they call it, in there with it.
Hmm.
And he says it has to, they can't, it had the way the mixture is, you know, like it, most every farm, you, you'd like to have water in the hole because all you gotta do is. Pour, pour dry concrete in it and it works, but apparently it doesn't work that way for the utility poles. And so they had to wait until the, it dried up to be able to use their materials to go back through and concrete.
One of them was sitting on the fence, I guess, pushing it away from the pole or.
Yeah, it was late and they said, that's, we called about it and. And said, we, you know, somebody else is going to have, we're going to have more problems if you let it happen. And he said, no, the, the lines up top won't hold it long enough for that one.
Wow. Conductor ship.
But the first one broke with the, with the storms that came through.
Bob tell you all about that. He used to come up. Any Bob. Both worked at Duck River, but he put the poles up.
Yeah. Uh, I don't have a financial report because of the fact that, you know, as, as you're in. Even, uh, it just takes, it takes her a long time to close out all the final stuff for year end. And so, uh, it'll be a bit before Kay gets us that information.
I'll just sit outside.
No, yeah, he can leave it.
Turn it off.
Oh, yeah.
Um, is it updated? I'm sending him the same information.
That's your. Code for your, your arm sensor. Blood sugar code. Yeah. Um. Is there any other, any questions or anything like that I can, you can answer on more of the, you know, the poetry thing?
I just have a question, Paul, about the issue with the pressure feed and the gravity feed when it comes to sewer. Um, was that question not resolved before they began the project or, or project, or is it kind of? Okay, I got it.
There, um.
I understand.
This is not, this being a private system.
Yeah.
Um. Shovel power doesn't, um, usually work with private systems. Uh, and so it needed to go through there. They wanted some extra steps taken care of before it joins their system.
Right.
And so that's what's, he's requiring extras. Um.
So those.
They, they didn't want to be involved at the beginning.
And, and I remember that, but I. I guess I assumed that the extra steps had been discussed and.
Some was discussed after the project was already bid and, and on the, and it was done and we were starting to move dirt. And then it seems like it also seems to be a moving target.
Okay, then that's what it is. Okay, thank you.
Questions? Do I have a motion to approve the manager's report and the maintenance report?
I think that's.
A motion from member Lars, Larson, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
No.
Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries. So all business, do you have the Azure lease update?
Sure, uh. I'll stand up. So I can speak to everybody. We're making progress. Uh, last week of July. First part of August, uh, we hammered out, uh, all the legal language, financial terms and everything with MTSU sublease. Uh, we executed. Our lease with you all, more theft of ginger. Uh, because we had to send a your lease and our sublease with our signature, but not MTSU signature. Uh, to the state attorney general office.
Uh, to the state attorney general office, and they had to approve it, that the deadline was August first. So they, the state adjutant, attorney general, looking at the legal language, approved it. That was, uh, whatever August first was at ten o'clock at night, because they had to get it in to the state. School bonding authority, this is not a bond, but they're the people at state that approved the financial terms. Uh, it is sitting there, there's two different entities at the state that it has to go through in their, their vetting process. Our, our, uh, folks at MTSU, the lawyers and the building people, and everybody at MTSU doesn't think that it's gonna be any issue. And, but the state, those two entities have the right to say we want, they wanna make a change. If they don't come back, the changes, we would execute that. MTSU would sign the agreement, we don't have the right to change it at this point, because we had to sign it, so the state can look at it and say we will approve it. So there are no, no changes that, they're saying that. Based on the timelines of these committee approvals and everything, that we would execute, have the final copy on October twenty-third. Fully executed, which would trigger the movement of money from MTSU. To us, and it would also trigger our agreement with you all, so. In theory, I guess, the lease would commence on the first of November, or some, somewhere thereabouts. They briefed David and I that if they did have changes, we wouldn't hear about it on October twenty-third, we hear about it. While they were reviewing it, so, so if there were changes, we, we would have the ability. Say, yes, we can accept change, or we would negotiate or whatever, they came back, said, we all like something in what, what you've signed. And we have the ability to do that, it's still not missed the October twenty-third deadline. Uh, the, so one way or another, we, we and MTSU feel like, uh, October is. Is the, is the deal, and I don't think that, uh, we tried to figure out a way to make it go any faster, and this, it's in the hands of the state. Uh, the fact that it got through the attorney general, and we were, we were on the phone with lawyers. That night, late, and that attorney general's office is looking at it at nine o'clock at night. Uh, and there was literally two sentences or something that they had a question about. Tells me that MTSU knows what the state's looking for. And, you know, it, it wasn't like they had twenty changes, it was literally a sentence or two, and a twenty-page, twenty-five-page lease agreement. So, uh, lease gets executed, we start paying you. MTSU sends us money to start the construction process, the first part of that being. The, uh, uh, site engineering, uh, which would develop the construction plans. And, uh, depending on how fast that happens, that could be forty-five days, uh. And if, if you kind of follow that timeline out, you're starting to get paid, MTSU's paying us. But probably moving, uh, dirt, uh, with bulldozers and all that. First of January, which is about the time it gets cold. That the goal, the original goal was to have, um. They have it ready to put, you know, temporary structure on and operating, you know, spring break. Practical reality obvious, if we had a bad winter, that could be May first. Uh, so. We're looking for ways to compress the timeline. Uh. We can't spend money at this point. We can't start spending money on, you know, engineering fees and all that, because the state conceptually could come back and say, we don't. Nobody thinks that, because they're already starting to pay you for land that was contiguous to ours, and. They bought the house and we on the beach, plenty of beach in the ocean. So we, we think it's all gonna go through, but. So if we can figure out how to compress it, we will, because it, it would be great if we can get started first in November.
Yeah.
Cause that, because you could get, you could probably get the asphalt down before. The, uh, you know, asphalt plan. Park winner, that's the update, it's, it's going as fat, you know, it's now sitting there up in, in state offices with. Bureaucrats shopping around, looking at it. We think the numbers will withstand the, uh, script, you know, what they're looking at, uh. Now, because of the pricing and everything, it's a very unique scenario, because MTSU doesn't own the land. And we're leasing it to us, and there is a lease purchase. And that's probably, it's gonna be a one-of-a-kind, so, you know, it may be a head scratcher for bureaucrats, they're not seeing that. But they all know what we're up, you know, it's all very transparent, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's the update, I'm, I'm glad to answer questions, but we're, we're encouraged that. That it's cracking along.
Okay.
Don't see anything to mess it up at this point.
Given the time of year and construction over winter and possibly May, what? Looks like they'll be done with their first semester then, before they're really able to get started in operations there. So operations for the fall semester.
Well, yeah, they could be up in May.
Yeah.
They could still move, I mean.
They don't operate as much in the summer, but they, because they're trying, you know, they've always got a back, they, they do operate year-round.
Yeah.
I mean, it's busier. For some of the flight training, but even in the summer, which is an off semester time, they're still flying, so, you know. Uh, somewhere April, May, uh, they'd be setting up here and moving airplanes here. We'll keep you updated.
Thank you.
Hopefully, one more meeting, and I can tell you.
It's done.
Somebody has problems. We'll hold our breath.
You'll have that money in your bank account.
We're, we're giving it all to the construction guys, but that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And that includes old business, now new businesses, um, Bill Stewart lease. And you struggle with requests.
Okay, um, as was mentioned, uh, last. Um, last meeting. Um, Mr. Bill Stewart, who had the lease on the property, um, passed away. He did come to an agreement with, uh, Mr. Stover to acquire one of the, one of the buildings, one of the hangars. Um. And so. We did review, I did review the lease, his lease was expiring September, so it's, it's, uh. It's not a factor after September. Uh, have not been approached by the family, and I do not see that being a factor from the family, because. Uh, I think Mr. Stover has actually spoken with some of the family members, maybe. They don't look to do anything with it, because he still has another project that's in mid, mid-construction at Telemanser. And so that's one that they'll have to finish up and wrap up, and they're not looking to start anything new. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Stover has approached us, and I just lost your name, I'm sorry.
Danny Fisher.
Danny Fisher, uh, is representing Mr. Stover, because Mr. Stover had to be called out of town, work-related, and couldn't be here. Uh, this is, uh, is one of his employees. And he is with, uh. A and L RV sales, and so that's, um, he's, uh, and he's, uh, the owner. And so he's one of the ones that, uh, he is the one that's gonna be requesting, and he is requesting to lease. The parcel next to Dr. George. Um. And I met with him last week, and as of last week, he was getting two quotes for a sixty by sixty and a sixty by eighty. And he's still not, he's not sure exactly which one he's gonna do just yet, uh, because he's still waiting on the numbers for that. But he did want to go ahead and get into the, on the list and, and get in front of us, because I did tell him that was the first stage. Uh, because I did take him up there and did show him the, the location, and he is good with that, he, he currently has a Cirrus. But, um, that's, that's his own personal airplane. There, um. I didn't know if he, has he mentioned anything else to you about what else?
I mean, they've got eight stores, so they're kind of looking, I, I mean, I think they're looking at maybe getting another. Flying a little bigger plane, that can fly to all the stores, that's one of his main goals. He's got stores here, uh, Georgia, Lake Park, Georgia, Richmond, Virginia. Chalk Windy, North Carolina, Jackson, Tennessee, and all of them have small airports close by. So that's one of his goals, instead of driving twelve hours to North Carolina, he can just fly. That's one of his goals, I think.
So this was just the, the first step, because he wanted to make sure that he got, um, on there, he, um, is. Um, addressing a couple of different builders, and, um. So I. Said that was the. Uh, he's aware of what the policy is as far as the thirty-five cents a square foot, the, um. And the fact that he has to match whatever size building with, with ramp.
Yeah.
And so he's familiar with those, so I've addressed that with him. He's familiar, he's getting quotes, like I said, on that, whether he goes sixty or eighty. Um, if he's looking at a bigger airplane, my guess is he is looking at, but originally he had a sixty by sixty, and that's what he was gonna be, was gonna be good with, so. He was, uh, originally starting there, but the more he's thought about it. Um, because he'd like to put an RV in there too. That makes sense. Yeah, that makes sense, that he would want to put one of those, as long as he's got flying airplanes in there, he can put an RV in there. Um. And so, um, but he's, he's, uh, he's anxious to get started, because he had taught that, um, because I think he had. Been in just, in discussion with Bill Stewart, he thought that his, the hangar was gonna be starting pretty soon. So he's anxious to go ahead and get moving, that's why he wanted to go ahead, and even though he couldn't be here. They want to go ahead and come and bring it up before you guys as far as. Uh. It's, it's, it's do the initial, I understand that, and I told him that until he can come up with the, the square footage. That he exactly needs, that we couldn't say yea or nay, but he wanted to go ahead and just still. Be on the list, so that he can have it out there and sort of get his name in, in front in case somebody else, because that is. And you're aware that when that speech, that piece becomes available, that's the cheapest place to build. Because the utilities are, are there, it's flat, it's quick, it's first, that type hair, airplane versus. I did speak with, just as an update, I did speak with Quigley and Dewey's, they wanted to stay where they were and where they were going, because I said. It would make sense to go ahead and just continue that development, since the buildings were already there, as a matter of fact, the buildings are. On that, almost sitting on that piece of property, uh, just because the guy dropped it in the wrong spot. And, um, they said they wanted to stay where they were, so they're willing to, because he's got a, um. Uh, Dewey's looked at it, and his airplane's too big to maneuver around that corner, and so. One of the things that we will have to address in, um. We've been talking ACIP with our, my engineer beforehand, we'll have to expand that, that turn a little bit to have more room for people to. Make those turns around Dr. George's hangar and around the end of that hangar.
Oh, what size hangar was, uh, Mr. Stewart planning to build for Mr. Stover, I mean, had that?
Well, he was, he was, uh, Bill Stewart was building the three eighty, but the three sixty by sixties all under one.
So it was gonna be a sixty by sixty?
It was gonna be a sixty by sixty.
Got it.
So that's why he originally started with the idea of a sixty by sixty, but then the more he looked at it, he thought. That while he had that opportunity, he might go a little bit wider.
And, um. What side, Jim George, what, what size is your hang?
Sixty by sixty.
So it's, okay. So sixty by sixty fits with the footprint of the other hangars.
Yes, now, one of the things it does do now that we, um, we will lose, we will end up losing a hangar. Because of the fact that.
The setbacks between.
Between the hangars for, for codes and things of that nature, we're gonna, because he was doing it all under one roof, he was gonna be able to squeeze those three together with two firewalls and things of that nature. When you split them apart like that, you're not gonna be able to do that, because it eventually, the, the terrain drops too much, and so we're, uh, we're gonna. We can fit another, uh, sixty by sixty on the past, the sixty by eighty, even if he does with the eighty, they'll still work with no problem. But we wouldn't be able to put another sixty by sixty in there like he had before.
Contemplating the sixty by eighty, would that be eighty feet wide or anything?
Okay, eighty foot wide, sixty more seats. Um, with the way the utilities are, we can't go any deeper than sixty feet.
Okay.
The way the utilities have been run, but also because of, um, what we've designed for. Just to the north of there. Um, uh, we've, we can only handle an eighty-foot deep, because we have to, there's a domino effect. Uh, so only eighty-foot deep on the next one, so that there can be enough taxiway width and taxiway safety area. For the next row, which would be a hundred-foot deep, to be able to get a hundred-foot deep here, I have to, we have to stair-step it down to make it wide enough. Because of the fact of potential, um, safety area for DC three to be able to taxi down through there and not get on anybody else's ramp with their wingtips.
Had Mr. Stewart, uh, uh, ordered any steel package or anything like that for?
Not that I'm aware of, he's talked to me about some other installations, so he's got some things that, that he bought with his last one. That he bought extra of, and so he's got materials, I think, that he stored with his, cause he, that's what he, that's his primary last few things that he's been building have been hang.
Right, but there's no orphan supplies sitting on that.
Not that are associated with Mr. Stewart, no. The orphan supplies you see up there are Dewey's and Quigley's hangars, their steel package.
And when you said his lease expires September, do you mean the beginning of September or the end?
Beginning of September.
Okay, so a week from now. And we haven't heard that, okay.
And it was just for, it was a two-year, that was part of that two-year construction lease that we did, and he had a, a lower rate, so that. Those that were gonna come in, and Mr. Stover was actually gonna be cut, would have been one of the ones that would have, was coming to us to, to, to get his. Thirty-year lease when the construction's.
Curious to me, what might be helpful would be. At some point, so maybe we get a conceptual plan of the airport of. What your long-term plan is for hangars? And where? And not lose one, but felt somebody wants an extra twenty feet, then that sort of thing, and. Utilities are being put in, so, well, let's plan for.
Yep. Then. It, it's part of the ongoing ALP process, that's been hung up with some forecasting issues. Uh, that's kind of the next stage, once we get that cleared out, but I've, I've talked with Paul for that whole. Area there, just kind of looking at some potential layouts, but we'll, we'll dive further into those as the planning process moves along.
Can you give a quick primer for those who don't know, ALP, Airport Layout Plan, and how it's required and?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Matt Claire about with Garmer, airport consulting engineer. Um, yes, ALP is the Airport Layout Plan, it's a set of documents and drawings, uh, there's a narrative that goes with it, and it looks at. Existing conditions, forecasted conditions, um, and then it'll look at drawings, how, you know, how things stand as they are. The terminal area plan, which is kind of the overall development we want to look at. Um, along with that, there's airspace drawings, we look at approaches, you know, issues we're gonna see in that. There's a airport property map that will look at, you know, what, what property the airport holds. What they want to look at purchasing long-term, it's, it's really like a twenty-year outlook for your airport, and, you know, that's. That's, that's what we're looking at, Paul, I know when we, when we get closer to some of those layouts, we'll sit down, and we'll, we'll talk about it, I've kind of given him. A primer on some things we've looked at, but even with the, the purchase of the new property with MTSU, we don't have. A plan on paper for that yet, so we'll, we'll dive into that a bit further.
We have an airport layout plan from oh-eight.
Yeah.
That we're still following.
Yeah.
Because, and that's the reason why we're having to update this, so those, um. Those hangars are on the location where there was a hangar marked on those, that airport layout plan. Um, so it's not like we're doing anything stray, it's just the fact.
No, that's.
We are, but we are.
Not what I.
But we are losing, yeah, I, we are losing that one.
It's more getting the updated plan.
Yes.
That's what I was pushing.
Yes, and that's what we want.
Cause I've been hearing for a year, well, we're working on this updated plan, well, sometimes a fence just overtake you if you don't.
Yeah.
Update.
I agree, and I, and I have been.
So, next month or when?
I, I wish, so, the, the issue with this, why it's, it's, it's taking longer than anticipated is. Because with the move of MTSU coming down here, that pushed the airport's total operations over a hundred thousand. We did not expect, normally this would go for review over to the Jackson Flight District Office for, uh, the FAA. Going over a hundred thousand operations, setting up to Washington DC unexpectedly, and they. I don't know, they, they went through everything with a very fine-tooth comb, and I think are really overanalyzing. A lot of what's happened, I wish we had capped it at ninety-nine thousand operations, it would have made our life.
Well, okay, so. Tell me if I'm wrong. The way I've always done it, before it goes to anybody for like that for review, the board should review it and say, well, yeah. This is kind of strategically what we believe the airport should be doing, this is the direction we should be going. And then it's finalized and it goes. And then it's finalized and it goes to Washington for review. But not in reverse, because what's happened is you're to present it to us and it's a done deal. We don't, we can't do anything.
One of the things, what I was hoping to present to was the drawings and renderings of what ideas and concept. This hasn't even got to that point yet because the forecasting delayed it. This forecasting is.
Okay, I got it, I got it.
Forecasting numbers came from formulas that FAA themselves came up with and.
So let me say it a different way. We're building a house and we're working with the architect and every time you said, well, could we do this? It'd be a month and a really big bill and we get all these nice drawings and you'd say, well, that's not exactly what I wanted. So we got to this concept of, can you give me a doodle? Just on a sheet of paper, doodle something out so we can kind of review it and say, yeah, that's the direction we're thinking about going. Is, that's something.
I think the board gives the airport director an attitude on that. It, he, he comes up with the ALP plan and then, and reviews it as we go along.
Well, and that's all I was saying is could we review it sometime?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, that's all I was asking.
Yes, when it comes to definitely.
I'm not complaining at all. I'm asking for information, actually.
When we're doing the, uh, forecasting is something.
It's a lot of data and number crunching.
It's, it's not something I pay much attention to, truthfully. Um, and I.
Yeah, I'd rather.
I was planning for twenty years and I still don't pay that much attention to it. It's, it's a necessary evil that goes with FAA, in my opinion. The drawing itself is where, and I have met with many people and that actually even. They cut out a piece of papers the size of hangers and moved them around on a piece of paper to lay them out and that, and that's something that we will do.
That's what I was talking.
When we cut, when it gets to that, and I've been encouraging and trying to get them to move to that step. And they, they've just been held up because until FAA turns them loose, they didn't, they didn't want to spend their money on something that FAA might change.
As, as the forecasting section is approved, that opens up the next line, which is to look at future layouts. So like you said, we, Paul and I have kind of brainstormed on a few things already, but it's nothing that's been actually put on the drawing yet. Yeah, I have some sketches and Paul, I can send you anything, you know, we need to go ahead and share it, but you know, we can pencil things in and, you know.
Just conceptual stuff. I, I think it'd be great to look at just to understand.
Pages of those that we can definitely email out on that.
What, what is a reasonable forecast from when you think you'll get the go-ahead from Washington to take the next step?
Uh, actually, it sounds like that's starting to move. They're asking for it. You know, normally it's us bugging them just to try and push it along, but they're getting to the point now where they, they're, hey. Are you guys ready for us to go ahead and approve the forecast? So. Try in the next couple of weeks, we're hoping to get everything over to them to get that. Now, how long do they take? I, I wish I had an answer on it. I, I don't know for sure, but what was stuck is starting to move again at their request, not just ours.
So if we, uh, said we'd like an update on probably not next meeting, but the October meeting. Um, would it be reasonable to expect that we have moved that along to a point where you could give a presentation?
On to this board? On the four, or, or just like the overall status of?
The overall status and kind of conceptual, what your conceptual is.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be great.
Then.
That'd be great.
Do, do we need to memorialize this with a motion? Uh.
I, I mean, I, you don't have to.
Okay.
So.
I'll just make a business.
For, uh, Octobers.
And don't walk to it.
And if it hasn't moved that far along, you could just say, hey, it's not going to be ready to talk about it.
Yeah, ho, well, by October, I, I don't know if forecast they'll have approved, but.
Right.
We should have it to them at that point and hopefully they give us a timeline and I can say, all right, well, you know, we expect by whatever timeframe. That we should be getting into design and there's no reason Paul and I can't sit down and, you know, brainstorm a few things. Like we talked about. Get an overall layout of the airport and if we need to pop little things here and there, just to brainstorm, because that's ultimately what we're moving to next.
Thank you.
Perfect.
We don't need to take any action on the, the lease then, I guess.
I don't know that it's, I think he's, I think he still needs another month to make that happen. He just wanted to maybe get the first, he wanted to just put in the door.
Okay.
Because I think he's not quite there, because I think he still needs to find out if he's just going to do a sixty by sixty or sixty by eighty.
Right, that's right.
Know as soon as, as soon as he knows when he's going to, if he's going to do one or the other, let us know so we can have a square footage.
Next item is Dr. George's lease and amendment request.
He, yes, and both is what y'all were talking about. I'd been talking, they go into billing. He was waiting to get three people to put a deposit before he moved along, so that's. You know, he had just got one. I don't know if that matters to y'all. Look, I, I had gotten the, uh. The lease originally in September, two years ago, it'll be two years ago, uh, next month. And I don't know how much you guys heard about all the delays and everything that I went through, but I'll, I'll make it very, very short. First, there was a delay because of COVID and supply chains. Then all of a sudden it moved up. I didn't think. From ordered in September, we didn't think we'd get it to September twenty twenty-two. All of a sudden it showed up in April. But then there were multiple delays with codes and poor communications, especially with the independent person up in Nashville. Uh, and you, you just couldn't communicate with him. And, and to just make an extremely long story short. It was determined that I needed an engineer and an architect, not originally told, and I got those and that took months. And then we gave all the plans, no, no reply from Nashville. He was sick for four months and everything just, y'all heard about all of this. And so what I'm just asking, y'all do, do what you want. Is to just amend the terms of my lease. Everything is fantastic. We got the sewer line going, we got everything to move along. And I was kind of the guinea pig to, to help things going because you got Deweze coming and this, this gentleman's. Uh, that he's representing and I just would just like to change the, the lease. Push it, push it two years forward. I am currently, I have paid, been paying my lease payment. So all y'all would lose is, you know, going two years in the, the future would make it. I would be very appreciative if you guys did that. There's been just a bunch of extraordinary circumstances. I would take credit for. Ten, twenty percent of it, but not the other eighty percent. But hey, that's, that's it. And, uh, I, uh, and also I've been talking to all the people that are currently building, trying to. Help them out, get through this. I'm, I'm done talking.
Just, just to be clear, you're asking to move the termination date of, of your lease two years in the future from what it was?
Yes, yes, and I have been currently paying.
Right.
We're not going to change the dimensions of the hangar or?
It's done.
No, that's done.
Yeah.
And none of the language in the lease itself?
Not, nothing, and, uh, I'm, I'm thrilled to be here. Despite what happened.
Yeah.
And, and you know, by the way, I didn't say this, the only person that. Was Henry Bellkamp's.
And.
And his complaints. If, if you agree with that, Paul?
Did help, yes. Okay. Um, as far as the two years, I, I mean, as he said, and, and, and I'm sure it's been mentioned in more than just associated with a hangar, but I mean. Twenty twenty didn't exist. I mean, it's, I mean, so it's just continuing certain instances. It's not like there's, I mean, there's. There, there's nothing you can see on something like that. You can't forecast that, so I don't, I don't see a reasoning for a two-year wish. I mean, I understand that that it's two years of future income from the airport at some point in time, but that's just. And I can't see that as being a stumbling block of any kind.
Sounds reasonable to me.
The legal need to look at it to, does she need to?
I don't think, I mean.
On your motion, she's going to, she's going to describe whatever you recommend. If you choose to, choose to make that change, the only question would be whether it needs to go one more step.
I'm okay with this request.
I'm too.
So I have a motion to approve the request to extend the existing lease for two years.
Two years.
I have a motion from.
Eric.
Eric, now I want to make sure you made the motion.
Oh, yes, I did, yeah.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have a make one for comment. You guys have a fantastic airport manager, so I'm just.
You know that.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, then the next item is Airport Authority November and December meeting dates. I'd like to add, did we decide to? Next month have the meeting after this big event? I, I, I know we talked about it. I didn't remember if we decided.
Recall there being a decision made about it. I remember it being thrown out there, but you recall me some.
That's like twenty-first, right?
Uh.
Right, yeah, I'm looking now. It's the twenty-first at nine thirty. Will it be done by the time of our normal meeting?
Yes, the, the governor has to leave at eleven. And so they plan on wrapping everything up and they'll be, they'll be done and gone. I mean, I imagine the event trucks will be showing up by noon.
We're going to be here anyway.
Might as well, right?
I need to make a. Yeah, we need to make a motion and so since we're doing that, we can just take that one. So a motion to move the September date to September twenty-first.
Right.
At noon.
So moved. She's all moved.
Yeah. I guess that's your motion. First, remember Fayard, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second, remember Kazork. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, twenty-first at noon. Then this November and December, who's bringing the turkey for November?
That's Paul, he's the cooker on it.
Alternative being to that, so.
I will tell you that the, um, your, your dates are now lined up with the planning commission dates. Those are on the same Thursday night. And, uh, normally, not sure what Wally has done this year, but normally we just go back a week. So if, if y'all are okay with that, we.
The third Thursday.
Just move back to the third Thursday for November and December.
Okay.
Need a motion for that one?
Yeah, you can do that in.
So that's sixteen, eleven sixteen, is that right?
Eleven sixteen and twelve twenty-one.
Okay.
That works in my calendar.
I don't know, Vivian's off on the twenty-first.
I have a motion to approve November sixteenth and December twenty-first for our monthly meetings.
I'll, I'll move that we, uh, move the November meeting to the third Thursday, eleven sixteen, and the December meeting to eleven twenty-one, uh, twelve PM. Uh, twelve, yeah, twelve twenty-one, sorry, thank you.
I have a motion from member Kazork, do I have a second?
Sure.
I have a second, remember Larson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, some motion carries to change the meetings. I think that concludes new business. Now we have officer elections.
Okay, I will take over, um. For the chairman's. So the officers' elections are for one year. And Miss Lane has served for a year, so now we need to choose a new one, so I'll take.
Change that from two to one.
I don't know, did it used to be two?
It used to be two, didn't it, Eric?
That'd be great. You get another year.
Oh, no, no, I was just filling out the rest of Lane's section. Uh, I don't know, I just thought it was one.
That's what I always, I was under the impression it was one, but I was.
I'm pretty sure it was six, that's okay.
Well, you would like, I'm sure. So that's okay.
You can be reappointed, yes, ma'am, you can.
I'd like to make a motion for never Larson to accept the chairman.
And like to hide under the table.
I'll, uh, I'll second that.
Okay, so there's a nomination for Mr. Larson and a second for that. Do I hear any other nominations? Can I hear any other nominations? Hey, all in favor for Mr. Larson to be the new chairman?
Say aye.
Sounds unanimous. I didn't hear him say anything. Okay, now we'll need a nomination for a vice chairman.
Well, nominee, Mr. Fayard, here.
Whoa, 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 I thought we were friends.
Good on your resume.
Yeah, right.
I'm going to quickly second that one.
The play is really good.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I've heard the play is real good.
We'll be here to ask you up to order that.
Okay, I have a nomination for Mr. Fayard for vice chairman from Mr. Larson. And I'm sorry, Mr. Kazork and Mr. Larson seconded. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All in favor, Mr. Fayard being vice chair? All opposed? You don't get to vote. Now it's your meeting, Mr. Larson.
If I had a gavel, I'd hand it to you.
Oh, great. I get to do my favorite thing then?
Yes.
I adjourn this meeting.
Very good move.